Testing. Mine doesn't really work.
Yours just hasn't, it's like, no, it's just real dull.
It's, it's, yeah, it's dull. Yours is really bright. So you have to tell me if I'm on and am I supposed to be on.
Good eve- Good evening and welcome to the December 19th Z- zoning board of adjustment meeting. And it is now 6:00 PM and we will call the meeting to order. Anyone that wishes to testify this evening, please raise your right hand and answer the following. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Anyone wishing to address the zoning board of adjustment on any matter that is not posted on the agenda should have given their completed registration card to the recording secretary prior to the start of the meeting.
Do we have anyone signed up?
We have no one signed up to speak tonight. The first item on our agenda is C1, approval of minutes. Consider approval of the August 29th, 2024 zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes and take appropriate action. Board, can you please state if you have any corrections to the minutes for the August 29th meeting? Seeing no corrections, can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Pat has approved the motion. Can I get a second? Michael seconds. Now we will take a vote on the motion. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the August 29th meeting, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is D1. Conduct a public hearing and consider a variance request at 3326 Gatwick Place and take appropriate action. David Luther, owner of lot 13, block N of Oakwood, Oakbrook Estates, more commonly known as 3326 Gatwick Place, is requesting permission to encroach the required 10-foot rear yard setback by five feet and the allowed lot coverage of 45% by 3.24% to construct a 451-square-foot patio cover. The comprehensive zoning ordinance, Article 3.3.7, requires a minimum 10-foot rear yard setback and 45% maximum lot coverage to allow for open and unoccupied space. A variance to allow the approximately five-foot encroachment on the rear yard setback and the 48.24 lot coverage would be required for a permit to be issued. Danielle Summers, Director of Community Services, will now present the case for the city.
Good evening, Board. Danielle Summers, Director of Community Services. Tonight we have a case before you for 3326 Gatwick Place. And just for the record, the applicant couldn't be here tonight to answer any questions because he is sick. So this case is, you've seen one similar to this before, is to encroach the setback by five feet, the 10 feet that's required, they want to encroach, they're asking to encroach it by five feet. And then the lot coverage of 45% to encroach it by the 3.24%. And so that takes them over the allowed lot coverage of 48.2% instead of 45%. So that, you can see in front of you, you've got the zoning board, I mean, I'm sorry, comprehensive zoning ordinance article that pertains to this and then their variance request. So the patio cover, let me get to... Okay, let's start with this. So you can see, this is Gatwick Lane, or Gatwick Place, I'm sorry, and it has a 25-foot front setback now and then five feet on the sides and 10 feet in the back. What's unique about these lots in this area is the, they were constructed with a 20-foot utility easement. So their entire rear yard is a utility easement. So typically, you cannot construct any kind of structure in a utility easement because they are, even though you own the property, the utility companies have the rights to the easement. So they typically don't let you construct. You can do things like maybe a swimming pool or a concrete pad, but you can't do anything that has a cover on it, any kind of structure. And, and so all these lots that you can see right now along that edge have that similar, it's 20 feet. So here's an overview of his property and you can see the front. He, back when this was built, the setback was 30 feet. Currently, it's now 25, but back then it was, it was 30. So in the back, he is wanting to build a patio, an outdoor patio. And this gives you the pictures of what it is. So it's kind of two-story, so they have a balcony with the patio underneath it. And so it's 16 feet wide, or I guess deep, and then 16 feet wide. So it encroaches that 20-foot setback. So he's currently working with Encore to get the easement moved. So Encore is, has agreed, and so has the country club, has agreed to allow him to move the easement, the five feet, so that he can construct this patio cover. And so right now, he's gotten the approval, but they're just going through the paperwork now. Because Encore has to do, is requiring specific things, Public Works has to get specific things in writing, and the golf course, because basically what they're doing is they're going to move the utility easement to the golf course instead of that property. So they do have the approval, they're just waiting on all the documents. So if this zoning, if this ZBA case is approved by you tonight, that will allow him to move forward once he gets approval in writing from Encore. Until that is completed, he can't start construction. So even if you approve it tonight, if it takes him six months to finally get all that paperwork done, he can't build for six months. Let's see. So this kind of gives you the area. Once again, you can see all those lots across there have that 20-foot easement. And so this is kind of pictures, it's a very small backyard. He has, like, his other lot has a swing pool in the back. This particular one has, they built it with a swing pool inside. So you can kind of see on the aerial that it has those, those lights on the top of it. And that, it, that's a swimming pool. So they built this indoor swimming pool. So that's kind of why he doesn't want to do that, he wants a patio to construct and be able to enjoy the, the golf course. And this gives you the other aerial views of the property. So that's what I have. Do you have any questions? Did I give you enough information?
I have a couple of questions. The swimming pool is currently encroaching on the 10 feet. Am I correct?
It is not. So I don't know if-
On his notes, it says that he hadn't, he has an existing covered pool which has pushed us over the limit by 2.7%.
That is the, so it has the indoor pool, so him doing the patio cover with that indoor pool is what, because right now, he's, his current lot coverage is a little bit over 43%. So him adding this patio cover to span the back of the property between the chimney the way he wants it is going to take him over by 3%. So he's currently under 3%.
So he's saying that the pool that is currently there, which is indoor, is making the backyard smaller. Is that what we're saying?
He, he feels that because they built the pool indoors the way they did, that it's pushed the house so far back to the minimum setback, because the house is all the way up to that 20 feet. Instead of it having room for them to do anything else because they built the pool inside, it's pushed the house so far back that they have no room to do anything in the back.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because it's not encroaching any setbacks.
Okay. And then you mentioned that when he built, you said when he built it, it was at 30 feet and now it's 20 feet?
The front?
I don't, I don't really understand what that was referring to, that's my question.
When we were talking about that, so this is the front side of the property, over on this side where you see where it says Gatwick Place. And then you can see the driveway that has a circular driveway. And then you see that dotted line that comes straight across the property? I'm sorry, this doesn't really point up there, so I don't really, all it does is change the pages. But the dotted line that runs across the front of it is, that's the setback. So back when this house was built, it was 30 feet. Now it's 25 feet. So if he was to build this house today, he could have, exactly the way it is, he could have moved it up to 25 feet. We wouldn't be here. Because it was built so long ago, it's at the 30-foot mark. So he has more front yard than he has backyard.
Thank you.
I've got a question. So the hardship he's claiming is the house was built and then the setbacks were changed for the front yard, or the house would have been five feet more forward?
Right, right. I mean, the, the biggest part of the hardship here is the fact that the rear yard is so small and it's all easement. So yes, if he would have built it today, then it would be move, it would move up five feet and he wouldn't have the problem in the back.
Okay, I think I understand.
Can you give a little background on why that was changed? And, and there's other houses in the city that have the same situation, right?
Right. So a lot of the houses that have been built in the last, I think it's been three to, somewhere in the three-to-five-year mark since they've changed that, I don't know the exact date, when they changed the setback requirements. And they were trying to give people more space to build their houses, you know? Most people nowadays appear to want more house, less property to maintain, and they want more house. They're, you know, bigger families, or you have in-laws, or whatever the family dynamic is, people want bigger houses. And you've noticed around the city, a lot of the houses that are being built are maximizing the lot. And so they decided to move it up for, to the 25-feet mark and give a little bit more room on the sides, because it used to be 10% of the lot width, the side yard setbacks, and they just changed them to five, just to kind of make it easier, because five is the minimum, minimum, minimum that you can do by building code. So you can encroach that for a house, no matter what. And then they gave more room in the back at the 10 feet, which is the typical setback. So current houses get to meet that requirement when you build them. But, you know, all the other houses that are existing are still that way until you tear them down and rebuild them.
And one last que- one last question. Can you go back to the slide that has the, the homes plotted out?
Do you want this one, or?
This one. So all the other homes along this street have the same, would have the same issue, correct? Thank you.
I shouldn't say, I don't know if it's necessarily all, it's just this area. So I think it it stops. I guess it kind of stops right at the corner of the picture and then it goes like two or three houses down this way, so. It's a majority of them, but I don't think it's all of them because Gatwick's pretty long.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Danielle?
I've got one. Can you help me understand a little better why the hardship of the utility easement is having to do anything with the 10-foot setback?
I guess it really doesn't. I mean, he, the people that live in that area feel like there's no other properties in the city that has that problem. A lot of people have, you have like your seven-and-a-half feet that might be on your side, and then your neighbor has a seven-and-a-half, if you have the alley in the back. Because most houses that have that, that grass easement in the back, it's 15 feet wide and seven-and-a-half is one and seven-and-a-half is the other. I don't know exactly why, I mean, because none of us were here back, actually, anybody that's currently in the city right now that works there doesn't really know why they built this particular area with that utility easement in the house, especially because the golf course is there. Nowadays, and most of the properties on the golf course, the easement is on the golf course side. So nobody knows why they built that little stretch of housing with that 20-foot easement on the residence property.
So even if the easement was on the golf course side, we'd still have the 10-foot-
We still would, yes.
So the easement has nothing to do with the encroachment of the setback?
Of course, the residents feel like it does, but you're right. In, in, in the aspect of this zoning case, you're right, it doesn't have anything to do with it.
Okay.
He just can't build it until he gets that approval.
Gotcha.
Any other questions?
You mentioned that they, the newer houses can have the 20, was it 20, 25?
25.
Approximately how many newer houses do they have on the street?
On this particular street?
Yes. That would be in this, in this scenario, I guess.
You mean with the 20-foot setback?
Yes.
None of those have rebuilt. And we do have a lot of houses that have either rebuilt or new houses that have built that have that 25-foot. But this particular area, there's, as far as I know, there's not any that have rebuilt.
I didn't know if he was like in a minority or a majority, or, you know, they were doing the teardowns.
Any other questions for Danielle? Okay. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak regarding this case? Okay, thank you, Danielle.
So I will tell you that we did receive one letter in favor. I don't know if they said... It just says Melody Kenny, it doesn't say her address. So they just said that they have, they're, they're in favor. So we just, that's the only one we received. Okay? Do you want me to set this on a certain page for you right now?
The people in, the people in that area, you just said one person?
Only one person responded, because, you know, we send it out to the 200 feet, 200 square feet around that residence. We send them out a letter letting them know that there's a zoning case so that they can let us know if they're for it or against it. We only received one response and they're for it.
So we really don't know? Because of only one?
Right, but typically if somebody's going to be against it, we would hear for them. But it's very rare that anybody responds to those letters anyways, so.
Okay, if there's no one else that would like to speak, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please? Thank you, Pat. Second. Michael seconds. Thank you very much. The public hearing is closed.
Okay, members, now we can discuss and talk among ourselves. Any questions or discussion that you would like to have amongst ourselves?
The house itself is five feet into the 10-foot.
Well, the proposal is, the proposal is, yes.
The addition.
The addition, the proposal is to be five, five feet more. Currently, there's not any-
The roof is more. The roof.
My understanding was that that was the total. Which one are you on?
See, there's that, and then the roof continues to go over. And I don't know what that says right there.
I can't see that. Are we allowed to, are we allowed to ask any questions? The patio. That's, that's how I took it, but- I'm not seeing that it's-
It's shaded because it's what they're-
Yeah, yeah. I'm not seeing that it's more.
So that, it looks like, it looks like it's going to be back down the roof. This is the edge of, you see the edge of the house, that line right there. And that aligns with the property line. I mean, that's what I read.
But you're taking, but I read it as the entire patio, the, the cover was the total five feet. Douglas is saying he's seeing that the, the top of the patio is going to be, extend more than five feet. Danielle, are we allowed to ask you questions at this point? Can you put the slide on the one that has the, this? It's a-
Is this the right one?
No.
This one?
Yeah.
No, that's not this one. This one, it's got several-
Oh, so when I, okay, so I didn't put that up here. I didn't put all those on here. They made it into your packet, but we only, I only put like the different elevations. I didn't put every single one of those on here.
So the question is, the requested five feet is total, right? The roof, does the roof extend more than the five feet that the applicant's asking for?
So it does. And so in the zoning, the, in any of the zoning allowances, and the reason why it doesn't say anything about that in here as far as it being a problem. So when we look at these things, we look at the wall. So if you, like, for example, on this, the columns or whatever on a patio cover, that wall would be where your setback is. The overhang is allowed to overhang into the easement or the setbacks or whatever by two and a half feet.
So it is over, but it's not required of variance?
But it's, but that part's okay. That's why we did not put that in the variance. If this is approved, it will be okay, I should say.
Did that answer your question? Any other conversation, Board?
You know, as I look at this, my first impression was it shouldn't be, but when I look at it, it's not a big deal.
Well, I guess. So-
So when you look at this down here, like right here, that's the 10-foot right there.
The thing, the thing you have to think about, or the thing I think about is, okay, what if everybody else on this street wanted to do something similar for whatever reason?
Yeah.
They're setting a precedence, though. You're, you're, you're-
No, I, I, I know, I feel like they're setting a precedent.
Yeah. Well, then you don't have, then you don't have any ordinance and that, we're not really here to, to make ordinance, we're just, we're here to make it an exception. I'm just pointing out things. And one of the things that we talked about in our training was the hardship, what is the hardship here?
So for this, for this case, the only hardship that he has is the fact that they have minimal rear yard. There's not really a whole lot of, I don't think there's any other properties than these ones in the whole city that have that tiny, teeny-tiny, no backyard. Just that stretch. And so you can't really, you know, I heard you say you're worrying about it setting a precedence. You can't really, it's, you can't really set a precedence in, because we don't really have that issue anywhere else as far as that tiny backyard.
But as we've talked about in other cases that we've had, the property owner knew this when they bought the property. Just another data point.
I'm sorry, so why is their backyard so much smaller than everybody else's? It's not because of the easement?
Um, that's the way they constructed them back there. When they built that whole area, they're all like that. They did it to give them a bigger front yard. Right. Correct. Correct.
And the size, as Pat mentioned, the size of the house factors into that backyard space as well. But if the house wasn't that big, it would be more yard.
Yeah, all the houses in that area were built like that. I mean, they're the only ones with that indoor swing pool, but all the houses are pretty similar in size and stuff along that area.
See, living on a golf course like I do, and if somebody encroached on the 10-foot variance, it would, and, and in a lot of cases, it would cover up somebody's site. I don't think it does that here. And that's what I was-
So do you want to look at the slide that kind of shows where it is on the golf course? Will that help? This kind of shows you, I don't know, they're kind of towards, in the middle of that street right up there? Actually, they're probably on this side of that curve. So I don't know what part of the fairway is too.
Now, I know that we, in most cases, we've got to find hardship. But at the same time, it makes sense.
So do you need me to help explain what the hardship is on this property a little bit, or what the hardship on the property is a little bit better? Would that help?
That would help me.
So for this property, their hardship is definitely the fact that they built this house at the 30-foot yard setback, which made, which moved it back to where they don't have a backyard. It's a very minimal backyard. In today's construction, it would have moved it up 25 feet, which means that we wouldn't be having this discussion because he would be able to fit in the setback. So their hardship is- So their hardship is the fact that they, it was built farther back, and there's no backyard. So that was what you, you would be able to consider the hardship.
Is, what's the possibility of the applicant building a smaller patio?
Well, that I can't answer. So you have the option, if you feel like you need to talk to him, is we can table this. And we can bring it back in, either, I don't know if it's too late for January, but we can bring it back in, in January or February for when he can be here so you can talk to him. You have that option. Um, you would cut it by six feet, seven feet. So it would be a pretty skinny patio.
Not having it, mhm.
I don't know, to me, it's more than just a look, it's the ability to have room, to enjoy it. Chairs, shams or something.
All right, any other discussion? Mike? Glenn? Brad? Pat? That's it? Okay. No other, there's no other discussion? Can I get a motion? And if you, the motions are listed for you, one. And then two, if you want to make a different motion. It's on page four of your packet. If you choose mo, if you choose to make the motion one, if you'll read it as indicated on your packet. And then your other option is to make another recommendation of your own wording. So, can I get a motion? Yeah, I need a motion, I need, I need a motion for us to vote on? Okay, but which, what, what do you want to mo, what, what is your motion? Okay, can you?
A motion to vote, to either approve or disapprove.
Okay, you have to make, you have to make a motion to either approve it or disapprove it.
A motion to approve it.
And so then you're going to read number one, please.
Consider approval for January 5th, 2020, January 25th, 2024, zoning board of appro, oh, I mean the wrong thing.
No, you're on page, it's on page four in your presentation packet.
I am on page four, isn't it?
It's four, am I?
That is page four, isn't it? I guess it's...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on my own packet. It's page six, I apologize. I was looking at my packet.
Action, okay, there we go. I move to approve the requested variance to the comprehensive zoning ordinance, Article 3.3.7, and allow the five-foot encroachment on the rear yard setback and 48.24% lot coverage for the proposed patio cover.
And I second it.
Thank you. Thank you, Glenn and Mike. Now we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Okay. All those not in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Does it, so does it pass? It passes? The motion passes. The vote was as follows. Patricia Driscoll voted for. Bradford Knob voted against. Connie Hardy voted against. Glenn Douglas voted for. And Michael Gardner voted for. Now can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting, please? Thank you, Pat, in a second. Thank you, Mike. All those in favor of adjournment, raise your hand. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. It is now 6:32. Thank you.